And I'll ask that you all keep Clinton County in your thoughts and prayers. They unexpectedly had a middle school teacher to pass away over the weekend. And Ms. Michaela, our mental health therapist, that's part of our crisis team, as Mrs. Dameron's part of our crisis team, she was there onsite at Clinton County schools today, just helping them with their staff. So just remember, Clinton County, it's a generous place.
Call the meeting over at this time? Roll call?
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering present. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Present.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Kazook, I don't have anything that I recommend striking or adding to the agenda. So if there's no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion. Join for a second. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
At this time, public comments?
There's a few things, Mr. Kazook, that I would like to mention during public conference time. Our high school, in partnership with the Lake Cumberland Regional College Workforce Center, it's their CTE, their Career Technical Education Department, which is also CTE Month, but they're doing a supply drive relative to the flood relief out in Eastern Kentucky. So different divisions of the CTE have divided up on what they're collecting. So Skills Club is collecting disposable gloves and bleach. HOSA, which is Health Sciences, is sponges, are sponges and cleaning vinegar. FFA is collecting buckets. Edgy Rising is trash bags and Dawn detergent. And TSA is collecting paper towels and detergent. And you can certainly drop those off at the high school. You can also drop off items at the Russell County Board of Education. And then it's also noted that all clubs will accept cash donations, push brooms, shovels, fans, and dehumidifiers as well. So I'm going to send that out district wide, but please continue to remember Eastern Kentucky, our friends, and your thoughts and prayers as well. If you can help, or your church, or your civic organization, and I know other entities are doing supply drives as well, but I really appreciate our teachers and our students. You know, that's giving back, right? And we did that with the tornadoes and previous eastern floods. But this time, our CTE groups took the lead on that. So we appreciate them and their leadership. One of our CTE groups, the engineering, just had an outstanding performance at UK this weekend as well. And I also want to, just again, I know at the January board meeting, we had, at that point, due to some weather, we had moved around to all the schools for school board member appreciation. And since that time, we have been to the ATC, and we've been to the high school, and previously we had been around to all of them. Just again, I want to thank our schools for just appreciating you all and what you all did. I think maybe one of the best events was Mr. Murray drawing Mr. Kazook, and Mr. Kazook drawing Mr. Murray. That might have been one of the best. And then they have it on a, not a easel, but canvas. Thank you. Thank you. They have it on a canvas. I don't know if you all got it put up at home or not, Mr. Murray, but that was good work, and that was fun. But even beyond that, I love that our schools know you all, our students know you all, you're familiar faces, and we just appreciate, we appreciate you certainly during School Board Appreciation Month, but we appreciate you all year long. So thank you for giving that time to somebody else, I guess.
Anybody else? Ms. Jenner?
Mr. Ford, I just have a question to you about if your staff and the board has started maybe thinking about what the impact could be if the federal government does desire and does quit supporting public schools at the state level.
I don't, like, I've written, we've done some open letters to Congressman Comer. There's been a lot of advocacy going on at the state side. And I know there's things going around as to what the reductions would be if all of those funds were gone. Personally, I don't think those funds will be gone. The Department of Ed may be gone, they may shift it back to the states and have other entities going around. But I'm glad you bring that up, Mr. Jenner, because I would encourage everybody in this room, and Ms. Jamie, our federal programs director is here, but to reach out to our elected officials, and certainly at the federal level. If that federal, if the federal dollars went away, as far as Title I, Title II, the number of staff that they take care of, and that's one of the informational sheets I have for you all, that goes to intervention and/or classroom size reduction is great, right? And we know that. That's what Title I serves high poverty schools, in a nutshell, and provides additional staff and also PD, training, all those types of things. In my heart of hearts, I don't see it going away. If there's ever a political climate to where it's reduced some, that's a possibility, absolutely. But during times like this, I guess everything's a possibility. But we need to make it local. So the conversation with the elected official is about, hey, you know, my child's classroom can't get any larger, right? My child has maybe a disability and needs those supports and things like that. Of course, again, idea, people talk about students in special ed, that's a law codified, you know, that's a law to serve in that. The Department of Education may be gone, but that would probably be housed under another branch as far as enforcement and things like that. So maybe not so much on the other grants, and we call them federal award grants, but special education and things like that, that's a federal law to provide services for those students.
Well, I'm also thinking the fact that, you know, the board has done a great job in schools during the summers, helping families who need help and getting food. Exactly which fund is coming from where, I have to admit, I'm not knowledgeable enough. But, you know, I'm also for that part, too.
And food service is funded, that is over, that is under the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, so it's not ran by the Federal Department of Education.
Technically.
That's under the United States Department of Agriculture. But if I was a parent, and right now, and I am, but I would make it known to our federal legislators, says, hey, I have one kid, two kids, three kids, it's a great benefit to me that my child eats breakfast and lunch free. And if they're there in after school, they get a free snack, too. Those things, people need to hear, our legislators need to hear from constituents. They need to hear those things, and they need it on a personal, local level.
So I guess I'll add to it. How can we get people who really supports, I mean, I can buy my own food, but those who just use this benefit tremendously to learn to call, write, email, you know, Representative Comer, Senator McConnell?
Senator Paul, yeah. Advocacy is always hard to mobilize, typically, and oftentimes, it's done too late. We get upset after the fact instead of being on the forefront of when things happen. So again, just encourage everybody to reach out to your representatives and your senators, and let people know what that, how that impact is.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go on to the next item. Russell County Extension, I'm sorry, Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition, Brandon Flat, Salem Elementary.
Ms. Robinson's been here this evening, so I told her-
But we do want to wish her a happy birthday, don't we?
Yes, it is her birthday. She's partying here. This month, we are recognizing Brandon Flat. He has ten years of teaching experience at Salem Elementary School. He teaches fourth grade science. In the past, he was a sub, an RTI assistant for our school district for four years prior to becoming a teacher. He has a bachelor's degree from Lindsey Wilson College in B5 Elementary Education and a master's degree from Eastern Kentucky. When asked what he likes best about teaching, he likes knowing he's making a positive difference in the lives of kids and hopefully influence them to always be their best. He also likes to be able to spark students' curiosity to want to learn more. He says, "It's always exciting for me to see when the students get excited about learning something new." In his spare time, he likes watching movies, playing video games, reading, writing, and traveling. His favorite quote is, "For I know the plans I have for you to close the Lord, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." He wants to say he really appreciates all the people that he works with. He has learned a lot from everyone in the county, and he thanks a lot of them. Is there anything else you want to say?
I will just say that last part, because I do really appreciate all of the knowledge I have gotten from teachers, not just in this county, but in others, but especially here, people I've worked with and have made such a great difference to me and just from all of the different schools I've been with. And I can say that I've learned from teachers from all the schools here in our county. But I do really appreciate all of the other people who have had an influence on me, and in particular, the ones I have worked with directly. And I do just want to say thank you for being recognized. It is very appreciated.
We appreciate you, Mr. Flat. You do a good job.
Next item on the agenda is Lindsey Westerfield, Russell County Public Library Pioneer Poetry Competition.
Always great when our public library can be represented with us at a board meeting.
Thank you.
And I put it on X the other day, but I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Christina and that award, statewide award. You can talk about that, but we just, our partnership with the library is just phenomenal. And whenever we say something, she'll say, "How can we make it happen?" And so accessible, and we just appreciate. I sent that about Christina to Mrs. McFaul, because she's been on several committees before. And Mrs. McFaul texted back the other day and said, "I just love her." You know, but you set the stage for that, Ms. Lindsey.
Thank you.
And I know that's your expectation.
Yes.
And just like with First Lady Beshear there the other day, you know, it was all hands on deck, and it was a great day. But we appreciate you all so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ford. And to the board, that means so much. I was going to say the same thing.
I got it first.
You did. You did. Yes, quickly, yes, Christine DeBurton, who is our Youth Services Librarian, was awarded with the Outstanding Youth Services Librarian of the Year Award at our Kentucky Public Library Association Conference, and she works very closely in all of our schools. And she cares so deeply about our students and supporting them. And so I appreciate from the board and Mr. Ford and our teachers and our staff for giving her that space in the classrooms to be able to make that impact. So thank you for that.
Oh, good.
Be all undeserving.
Thank you.
And with our visit from the First Lady, that was just a really important recognition, not just of our library, of our entire community, of what this county does to show how important it is that we're preparing children to come to school ready for kindergarten. And one of the best ways they can do that is by having books in their home. I know I'm preaching to acquire. Everyone in this room believes that, but it is really incredible that Russell County has the highest percentage enrollment of any county in the state in Dolly Parton's imagination.
We can clap for that.
We can.
And I know you said it that day, but certainly appreciate Woodland Farms.
Absolutely. And another incredible partner with the schools.
Yeah, absolutely.
We couldn't do that if it weren't for their financial gift for that. And John and Cheryl Adams said to me many times over the last few years, why does Dolly stop at age five? And that's why they cared so much to give the gift to ensure that kids get books at the book fair, so.
Which they have continued this year. You know, last year, they've given $20 to every child at the book fair for elementary and middle, and they've continued that.
So partnerships, though, partnerships and relationships, that is what it all comes down to. And we are, we, we in the library, we value our partnership with the schools so much, we couldn't really do what we do if it weren't for our partnership. So thank you all very much for that, all of you. I'll be very brief, and thank you for the, just a couple minutes to share this with everybody. In celebration of the Russell County bicentennial, the Russell County Public Library is hosting a poetry and prose contest, and that will be all through the month of March, so it's launching near the end of the week. We have a poetry contest and a prose contest. In the poetry contest, there are levels for fourth through eighth grade, and then also high school. So we wanted to make sure that you all know that students are very much invited to participate in this. There are cash prizes for that. They can submit hard copy or online. We'll be putting it out on the radio and social media and newspapers this week. I'll leave several of these here with you all. But it's an opportunity to commemorate and really memorialize reflections from the past and imagining what the future may look like for Russell County, and making sure that everyone in our county is involved in preserving that history for the future. 200 years only comes around, everyone's life, so it's really important. So I'll leave these with everybody. As always, if the schools need anything from the library, call me, please.
We talked about it today, too, at the principal and admin meeting.
Great.
And then I got the flyer from Mrs. Melton this afternoon, and it went out to everybody.
Wonderful.
So I expect a good participation.
Good. Good. Thank you so much, so much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
We have our previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report.
Our treasurer's report for the month of January 2025, beginning balance, beginning of the month, was $14,605,134.97. Total receipts for the month were $2,340,349.65. The total of receipts of beginning balance together, $16,945,484.62. Disbursements for the month were $4,257,749.83, and that brought our balance at the close of the month to $12,687,734.79. And our fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $10,690,31.43. Special projects, Fund Two, $6,118.8. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, negative $127,350.37. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $133,398 even. FSBK building fund, Fund Three Twenty, $1,343,753.84. Construction, Fund Three Sixty, negative $93,390.19. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $679,131.60. And fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $2,042.40. And that brought our total cash in bank for all funds together, $12,687,734.79.
I will note, too, on the construction fund, of course, we have already had fees and things associated with the bus garage and the field house. The bonds have been sold, but we've not been recipients of those.
We received the money maybe the Fourth of February.
February.
One of those very early days.
Yeah, it'll be reflected on the February.
So then next month will be reflected.
And more of the district activities.
That is money that the high school, middle school owe us, so we'll reconcile that here probably closer toward the end of this year.
It's not a, like a negative outstanding that we're owed.
No, it's just where they've received the funds, we print the checks, we just need to transfer it from there to downtown. The funds are there to cover it. It's not really what I'd be concerned about, a negative.
If there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of consent agenda items.
I might mostly approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
You got it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Russell County Middle School slash ANC canopy, construction documents advertised to receive bids.
So there's two, and I, we don't have, I don't have a recommendation of myself, and whatever action certainly that you all take as a board is what we'll do. And Justin, I appreciate him being here, Macal fresh from Sherman Carter, Barnhart, but let me say a few things, and then Justin, I'll ask, you can jump up. So really good and exciting news of working with RSA on our bonding potential. Lincoln thinks if everything goes as, he is thinking it will, we could sell bonds on a middle school project as soon as July 1 of 2028. That means we would spend year 2027 in design phase and really honing things out and things like that. So that is much quicker based upon current interest rate, but it's much quicker than what we thought it was going to be, but based upon current square footage cost and things like that, and current interest rates. And with the, of course, we have three nickels and equalization. FSBK, I know some of you all sat in sessions at the conference this weekend related to bonding and capital funds. So really, really excited about that possibility. I wanted to mention that because of the canopy here, if we move forward on any type of canopy, I think that's important that we keep that in the back of our minds. Also know that the current estimate, it's not a bid price, so it's not the final price, but it is expensive. I mean, Justin would tell you that. The bulk of this cost of this is the canopy part, not the, not the concrete that would go between the parts that would keep the kids up. I even talked to Mrs. Stringer some day, today, and Justin's going to talk about some different options as well, but I even said, you know, I told her the timeline, you know, for the middle school and stuff like that, and she said, "Well, Mr. Ford, I do want you to realize, if it's a, you know, if it's a really, really bad day, we've brought lunch over here to them before, so, you know, so they don't run over there in the rain." But I said, "Well," you know, I said, "The canopy part's really, really expensive." I said, "The timeline for the middle school's looking really, really good." And I even had asked about if we did the concrete part, Justin, and got them out of the water and the ice, and so they'd have the walkway that connects there and bought individual umbrellas, you know, and things like that for the kids. And she said, "Yeah, you know, that would work." So there are some options beyond just a straight up canopy, you know, that I'm talking, that maybe would work if it's, you know, suitable for you all. I don't know, it's, with that current estimated price, again, not went out to bid, but that's a lot if we're going to be able to build a middle school as soon as what we might be able to think that we're going to be able to do. So just some things to think about, as Justin's going to talk about, and I know you'll have that on your file, but as he's going to talk about the canopy, the design as it is now, he's going to mention this, but I'll mention it, too. Have to be approved by code. It has to withstand wind ratings and all those things. I'll hush, let you talk, okay?
Can it be reused?
Well, he'll talk about that, too. Yes, it can be reused.
What was your question?
Can it be reused?
Yeah, so I think there are a couple considerations there. One, yes, the components, I think, will be able to be reused. So basically, that is, it's a system of flat pans that are laid up there in a series, kind of like if you put metal panels on the side of the building. They're kind of all cut to length and locked in place. It's very similar on the top of the canopy. So if you ask me, can we completely reuse the canopy? Probably not. I mean, I can't imagine we'd be able to just pick the canopy up and reuse it as is. Could you reuse those components? I think you probably could reuse a lot of the components on a new canopy.
Sound like a puzzle, just put it back together?
Correct. So one of the things that we have done today on the new canopy is we're, not this entrance, but the other entrance along this side of the ANC, we're looking at tying in at that elevation. Between that elevation and the middle school, there's roughly two to three feet of fall. So we're going downhill about two to three feet. The thing that we have been trying to do is try to keep the canopy as simple as possible. So we're trying to pick a height at the high end that we can just remain consistent and let it run, just so we're not building complexity into the cost of the canopy as well. Now, what canopy manufacturers will typically tell you is they like to have a one-to-one ratio for the canopy to be effective, meaning that if the canopy's eight feet tall, it should be at least eight feet wide, so that you're actually getting a benefit from having a canopy. If too tall of a canopy, it doesn't serve a very good purpose because wind driven rain just blows right underneath of it, and it doesn't protect anything. So right now, because of that fall, we're holding the high end at about nine feet off the ground, and that two to three feet, we're in the 11 to 12 feet at the middle school steps. So we are making the canopy about 12 feet wide between the columns, so we can maintain that one-to-one ratio. So again, that's one of the things I think is driving some of the budget numbers there that we included in our cost of it. And thinking through, and in light of Mr. Ford's most recent information about your bonding capacity, one thing the board may want to do is consider an alternate. So we could bid the concrete work and basically do the things that we need to do on a temporary basis to at least affect the drainage and the concrete, give them a nice, you know, raised area to walk between the two buildings, but then include the canopy itself in an alternate. So we could go ahead and bid the project, and instead of looking at Justin saying, "Hey, you sure about this price?" Nobody's sure about any pricing these days. I can tell you that. But at least we have actual numbers, too, for you guys to consider and evaluate.
Instead of one total project price, you break it out.
That's right. So we could do, the base bid would be all the, all the concrete work and the drainage, so that we could do what Mr. Ford was talking about earlier, basically allowing that raised area for the kids to be able to go from one building to the other. But then the canopy itself, the canopy and the footings and foundations associated, that would be a separate price, so you guys could say, "We want to do only the drainage and the concrete, or we want to do both, or it's too expensive and we don't want to do any of it." So, you know, we're right here at the finish line. That's what I would recommend, is to go ahead and bid it and see what the actual numbers are, but including an alternate in there so that you guys could see what the value of that canopy is and make an informed decision.
I think, I know, kids need this, I know them.
Yeah.
But everybody's lost the importance of temporary. Temporary means letting you put in and take out. Well, I could call Amish probably next week for $20,000, put a walkway across there, have floor and everything, put it forward in every car, car garages, and we can sell them off. We got nothing, we're not buying them.
Right. The difficulty becomes, one, when we become involved, which we're required to be involved, we have to, we will have to submit it at least to a local building inspector. So they will require that we're, really the thing that will control on this project would be wind uplift. So that, that's a driver in cost, because those footings and everything have to be sized so that this thing doesn't get picked up by a wind and carried away. That, and then we also have to comply with ADA, which is Americans with Disability Act, and that path between the middle school and this ANC building. So those are the two things that we're looking at. We haven't included things like, we're not putting lights on this thing because we're considering it temporary. We're not including below, a lot of times, on these canopies, we will actually extend the downspouts, which are the legs of the canopy. We'll extend them below grade and tie all of that together with storm drainage. We're not doing that. We're basically just spilling the rain, or the rainwater to grade, so we're not doing anything like that to add to the cost, but this is about as cheaply and economical.
And the pipes, Justin, underneath the concrete, then would allow for the flow of water.
Correct.
And I know there may be, Russell County even gets monsoons every once in a while. There may be times that that would, I know, might not take that, but for the most part, the pipes would take that, which leaves Mrs. Stringer's concerns of the water, and then this time, you're about ice as well.
Yeah, we've been working with Doug Uche and his office, and basically, in this upper parking lot, they're looking at putting in a new drain to basically catch the water that kind of runs down through.
Yes.
Catch that, pipe it, and then without it just kind of becoming a puddle, kind of a constant nuisance that everybody has to walk through between those two points.
The material that's spec and everything like that, is that- The material that's speced and everything like that, is that, is that anything that could be looked at to, to lower? I know it's a cost estimate, but.
No, we could, we could look at that. So, you know, typically we will use, it's all aluminum, but it usually comes with a two-part Kynar paint. You know, we could look at whether or not, the issue becomes then, if, if it's temporary, temporary, that's one thing, but if we're going to try to reuse it later, then I probably would.
It could be too temporary, is that what you're saying?
That's right. I just wouldn't want it, to expose it to the elements for two, three years and then.
And then we're trying to use it again and it's not.
What were we thinking about using it again?
Well, maybe parts of Jamestown, parts of Salem, the back, I mean, there's, it would just depend.
Yeah, and, and depend, like I said, the components of it. We'll probably have different aluminum canopies and things to cover doors even on a new building that those components could possibly be reused on those.
Oh, when we build a middle school?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if, if they ever build a new high school, they're going to need them to be joined anyway. There's still going to be, be requirements for every garden. So, you know, they could be more full-time that way instead of finding it, but, but we could build it for a temporary basis to start with and it's sort of like see which way the wind blows.
Ms. Williams, can I put you on the spot as a sixth grade teacher here at the ANC?
I would love to.
She, she teaches here, and I just told her earlier, she walked by the door and, pardon me?
She's new too. She was going to keep her mouth shut. She wasn't tenured and then you called her out.
And then I called her out. Hey, hey, that's the way we do it. But earlier, I was in a meeting here on the side this afternoon, and she walked by and I said, Ms. Williams, Ms. Stringer was bragging on you today, then she came back. She said, hey, I'll, I'll stop. But her name was mentioned, wasn't it, Ms. Jamie, today? We had a, well, pretty long meetings today, instructional and otherwise. But, so, hold on, I'll, I'll circle right back to you. So Justin, what I've heard from saying, we've really not lost anything, or say as a district, if we said, hey, let's bid it, see what it comes in as, but then we would also have just the price of the concrete part.
Yeah.
So Ms. Williams, let's say that the canopy was just outrageously high. How would it be on your part as a teacher? We get, we get everybody out off the water, right? The water and the ice is not an issue, and kids carried umbrella, and like I talked to Ms. Stringer, then they would just put them in tubs as they enter the middle school and then grab them back out. You're here every day.
So my first question, I'm unsure, like this goes from, I guess, the doors?
The door you all come in?
Yes.
To the front entrance of the middle school?
Okay.
Yes.
In my time here, which is Justin's Thanksgiving, we have walked through snow and rain. We have never walked in the building. The kids actually are like feral out the door. They can probably talk and.
And they still want to go this long way?
Right. You can't even get them to wear coats, much less.
Feral out the door.
Yes.
To clarify, she does teach sixth grade.
That's where feral begins. But as far as, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly like as far as the construction, where, from the teacher standpoint, I'm trying to use my words very slowly.
So on rainy days and snowy days and those days like that, obviously, we would not expect, if we build a canopy, we would not expect you all to stop at the front door and then shoot down the sidewalk, right? Because.
Right.
We have, we defeated the purpose of the canopy. The expectation then was you would go on in the front door and walk down the hallway to the cafeteria.
Right.
And like now, I know that most of the time you walk on down the sidewalk all the way too.
Honestly, that's one of the only times in the day that the kids are able to freely talk to their friends. The rest of the time during instruction. So they love going out and hollering and being able to talk to their friends. I tried, I tried once because I didn't want to walk in the rain to walk into the other door, and I couldn't get them to walk to the door. I begged, even offered candy, and they would not. So they, they declined very respectfully.
Very sad.
Sure.
But.
Do you hear Bill?
Yeah.
And I, I'm not like being disagreeable or whatever, but I do not see, in the time that I've been here so far, that that would be something that would be welcomed by the students to have to walk in. We walk in, when we go to library days, when we go to whatever, they're expected to be quiet. There's instruction happening all over the, the main building at that time, and that's their time to not be quiet. And that's sixth graders being a little outlet.
And that's fair.
Yeah.
But well, let's say that, that we did get both.
As far as safety, I can see as far as like a, a safety, but in, in the time we.
Well, if it's the middle of a thunderstorm, you wouldn't be walking underneath the canopy either. You wouldn't be going outside, period, with that. How, how do you feel about if it worked out and we decided not to do the canopy, or the board decided not to do the canopy, but got everybody up, right? So you're not walking through the water unto the, to the sidewalk, but maybe all the kids do have the umbrellas?
Ooh, that turns into sword fights.
Yep.
Lifesavers, like.
You'll lose an eye.
I don't.
I don't have umbrellas for kids.
Not the, not the, it's a flat area.
We're going to go straight to ISS after lunch.
Hi, sir. And do you pick up at Russell Springs in the afternoon? Sometimes we couldn't use umbrellas. That's what I always. Because the wind.
Right, yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the truth about them. That's the problem. You didn't.
I don't know that there's a hard and fast answer to that.
Right.
Or that I've been here long enough to give.
Well, I just saw you sitting there and thought you're.
I'm so glad you did.
Yeah. And you're here in this building and you walk kids over there, so you're, you're a, don't you, as soon as you start, you're an expert. So we appreciate your expertise and information.
Yeah, I can't wait to come back.
So good.
In all, in all seriousness, thank you for considering my input.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know that I have enough experience with that to give like good information.
You see it every day.
So the rains, and we're talking about the walkway, I mean, there's no, there would be no driving.
No, 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 we stopped that.
Okay. Was that a good idea?
Yeah, well, we can change all that. Miss, I mean, it's a safety issue sometimes too, you know, and, and people then automatically know, well, I mean, there's a caution tape that's up right now, you know, that's stood there. And all of us, Russell County people know, but if you didn't know, it's open during the, you know, somebody out of town or something like that.
Well, that'd be something you'd worry about then.
But it would, it would serve as a, even more of a barricade if you want to look at it like that.
Yeah, with the race curb.
Yeah. But you're looking at, I mean, part of that will be, to make the surface, I mean, it'd be kind of high.
Yeah, I mean, I think what Gooch's office is doing, they're, they're warping some of the asphalt up to the concrete there.
Oh, okay.
Just to make that transition, so that you don't have.
Fall off.
Yeah, because really, we don't want much more than a six-inch curb.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if you get too high, anything above like two feet, we would have to introduce hand guardrails and, and things like that, which I don't think.
This canopy leaves that alley, like it would no longer be able to be driven, right?
That's correct, right, that's right. That's correct.
Not be in danger, couldn't turn a bunch of sixth graders loose in that.
Well, it wouldn't, I mean, they would see them, it wouldn't be.
I mean, you know, it's like in the falls and stuffs.
It's open.
We walk them, the teachers walk and give their classes all the way, and we don't come back until we're all in the door and in the care of whoever's lunch duty, the principals, assistant principals, administration.
It's very org, I mean, it is organized.
Yes.
It is. The teachers are always there.
I've seen it when they walk across.
Yeah. And I already told her, but you're speaking, and she is one of our new teachers, but we do appreciate the job you're doing because you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Maston sitting there, one of our new teachers, and I, I shared with her earlier, you know, she started with us this year. She, she didn't realize all these years that she wanted to be a teacher, but she does now. And, and like she told Ms. Tarter back in the fall, quote, "I've drunk this Kool-Aid. I like it. I want a bit of Kool-Aid." And she is a math whiz. John, she's smart like you. She takes math courses for fun. So did you not do that, right?
I would just tell the lady, I was like, you can stop now.
Well, we appreciate both of you. Great job.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Ford, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something earlier that just kind of sparked my interest. In, in, in aftermath, it either redo or we don't, you mentioned something about the drains part. If we can clear that up, if we don't do a canopy, that's what we're not, but we don't do that. We could drain that, we can fix that drainage, where it keeps that from ice and over, because it leaks and actually weak water.
Right.
As far as concrete pads, and I don't know how that works, but if you can drain the water, we may not even do the concrete.
That's right. But, but there's not, this wouldn't drain that. It would just prevent, is there a catch basin to move it down to here?
They are, they are proposing a drain on the upper side to catch it. And then they're, they're basically looking at, they were looking at two options to come.
And daylighting where?
On, just on the, the lower side, on the other side of the wall.
See, that's not, that's not really going to alleviate all your issue, Jackie. That's, Mr. Gratter, that's what I'm concerned, I don't want to mislead you, because this whole parking lot, there's a spring there for one thing, there has to be, right, Jackie? But this whole thing, you know, this is when, back during the days, we, when I had people salting, I said, hey, hit that middle school parking lot because it's a skating rink.
Right.
So.
The issue that we're addressing is the, the walkway between the middle school and the ANC basically becomes a dam. Because it sheets, sheet drains through that.
That's my point.
Hey, there's no reason for it to become a dam. There's no reason for it whatsoever. All you have to do is pour your pillars, eight inches, eight inches, put them at a 45, and water runs just like it is right now. It runs right underneath and go on, but the floor's eight inches above the ground, be no problem.
No, they have pipes for that.
So we wouldn't have to have that.
Yes.
The road itself will do the same purpose it's doing right now. Water ends up the same place. I mean, come on. This is a pretty darn sample, man, needs to look at it sample. I've got a hundred footer that I don't have no water to drain, so I'll just.
Yeah.
So what options do we have? Do separated, get bids on two different ones? Is that, is that what you're sort of suggesting?
That's what I would recommend. Yeah, we get a, we. Get an alternate for the canopy, and we, we have the base bid that corrects the drainage.
So how long, what, what kind of timeframe we talking about something like that?
So I think I've given Mr. Ford dates there, so we would look at having a pre-bid meeting on March the 4th, and then a follow-up, the bid date was March the 20th.
Which in anticipation of whatever action you all decide, I went ahead and reserved the rooms.
Yeah.
Something that would, that would be taken care of and you could, you could advertise for that.
And then you guys would be able to take action here one way or the other next month with our recommendation.
After we get the separate bids.
Correct.
You know how like on the construction of the bus garage, we had some alternate for that brick at the bottom? We had that, it's the same principle.
Yep. It's just breakout pricing, so you know exactly what the values are, rather than getting one lump sum and you don't really know what cost per.
But Mr. Gratter, going back to your point, the, the kids would not be walking in water or, I mean, you know, we could salt that sidewalk.
With concrete, right.
On the concrete, right. But the water issues would still be flowing through there. That's, that part. One way to, I mean, unless we did the stains and then daylighted it out here below there, would be a, you'd have to have multiple drains.
Yeah, I was just thinking, that was, that was a good quick fix, if we could drain that, whatever we got to this point, you know, that's a good question. I misunderstood that.
But the elevation would, would keep the kids out of the water.
Right.
Yeah, it sure would. And like Mr. McPherson said, you never know what the prices are until you, until you bid.
Mr. Ford, respectfully, I, again, I've just been here a couple of months, but we have not walked through water once before to lunch. There's been, of course, dampness where there has been water, but I, I have yet to see that amount of water.
Coming through there?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Have, have you walked through, and I know, I mean, it could be pouring one minute and stop, right?
Sure.
In sunshine and then it's snowing next, I know that. But has it been a lot of, of days right now during that lunchtime when you all come and got back and through in, in the bad rains?
Not really. Recently or so, and there's been days that we've even walked through, like after NTI days, when there, there's been some areas that still have snow.
Yes.
But where we walk is not shaded, so we haven't had to walk through snow, we haven't had to walk through ice. There's been salt remnants.
Yeah.
And there's like, I don't like to get my shoes wet. I've not had to hop over anything. So, I mean, I'm not, I, I just, I don't see, I have not seen yet the problems.
Hold on a minute, I'm going to bring something else up. If we did, if we did the, the concrete, like the walkway, can you put a, a drain under that?
Yeah, and that's what.
That's what it is. That's what it is. That's what we're talking about. Where we name up the water.
Right.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? We do the separate bids.
So like the item we're talking about now are the construction documents that's in your office package. So if you all, Mr. Selby, if you would make the bid to approve the construction documents and then.
With the proposed alternate.
Yeah, with the, with the alternate for the advertised bid. Is that what you said?
That's exactly what I said.
Exactly what you're saying.
Brenda, second.
Yeah.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
I'll sustain from voting.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
No, 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 you would still, again, this is not obligating, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Kazook.
Now, would there be a?
For number 10. We would still need to do that. For number 10.
Without?
The BG3. We still needed to submit that. That's a.
That, that's, it's really just a formality. It's part of the construction document approval.
That goes to KDE. It's not committing the board to anything else.
And honestly, KDE doesn't even look at it anymore because of House Bill 678, but it's something that is in the regulations, so they're still complying with the regulations.
So that's the BG3 that we could, just like we have this BG1 to begin to kick off the project, this statement of probable cause for BG3. And again, just for the total project cost, again, just pure estimates, is 341,350. That's the whole, that's the construction, that's the canopy, that's the.
All the soft.
All the soft costs, that's, that's everything. Again, BG3 is, is just a formality. It's not the board saying that we're going to pay $350,000. It's a, it's a process of paperwork that's required by KDE.
I just have a hard time agreeing to spend this kind of money that we're going to use for two years and then tear it down.[1697.66]
Yeah.
But again, we're not, I mean, this is, this is not saying you're going to do that either. If, if the bids come in and, and the board says no.
Exactly.
This BG three just goes away.
We still have the option to decline wherever it is, whenever that time comes.
Yep. No, 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 no. But with the construction documents and moving forward to advertise bids, uh, KDE would expect that a BG three, well, they have to have, a BG three has to be submitted, so. One doesn't go without the other.
Correct.
So, since, um, motion was made on item nine, we do need to make process ten.
So what, what do we say?
Just approval of the BG three.
So we just could move the next item, approve Russell County Middle School A and C canopy BG three.
Okay, then I'll wait there, buddy.
Second.
Vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Selby, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray?
Uh, I wouldn't even listen to you, but I sustain.
I'm sorry, Mr. Murray.
I wouldn't even listen to that, so I'm going to sustain, I didn't hear you.
Uh, Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And I'll just reiterate again, um, we can get this with the options, have a good, another good discussion, and then you all can decide what to do. I think that probably is a good decision, Justin, you get the numbers in?
Appreciate you being here. Answering, answering questions.
Be careful going home.
Yeah.
Now, your wife, is she a middle school?
Yes.
Yeah, she's a middle school teacher too. Pardon me?
Which was? Oh, I thought you were saying here.
Oh, no, 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 not, not here. Be careful going home, thank you, thank you. Uh, Jessica?
Okay, next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tentative district staffing and SBDM allocation policy.
So this is something I know you all see every year, but by statutes, we are supposed to give the site-based councils their tentative allocations, um, by March first, and then we'll, later on, we will do a, a final allocation. Ms. Carnes, in anticipation of, um, this evening's meeting, did give the, uh, principals, the, the same copy that you all got here at today's principals meeting, when we talked about those allocations. Very, um, you know, our district is very stable in attendance numbers, which is a good thing, if anything, we would like it to be, you know, going up. But it's not like some of my superintendent friends that we, you know, just lose a bunch of students every single year, so fortunately, our schools are all pretty stable. You all have to approve this, the, the site-based council then reviews it with their principal, and a good thing, I always like to note, it's up to the school councils then to take their staff, and so you have X amount of teachers, and then they get to decide where to place those teachers. Um, I've also, and Ms. Jamie, you can chime in if you, if you want to, I've also, and going back to what you said earlier, Mr. Onion, um, about, there's a worksheet that I've included in here for the federal personnel activity report of, of who all is, is paid. For instance, one thing, um, I didn't even mention, we was talking about, our instructional coaches that have been so valuable, I mean, our principals meeting today and our meeting after that was just talking about, they're paid with federal funds, Mr. Onion. And then Jameson Elementary School has five teachers paid with general, or title dollars. Uh, Russell Springs Elementary School has one, two, three, four, uh, full-time teachers, another half-time teacher, a, and then, uh, one of the instructional assistants that works with their AEL students is paid for, uh, point five out of that. At Salem Elementary School, it's three and a half, um, teachers, and then there's also an instructional assistant that's paid from that. Middle School has two teachers paid from, uh, instructional, or federal funds, and so does the high school. That's a lot of teachers paid with federal dollars, you know, and so think about what they're doing in our schools and the assistance that they're providing to our, um, our faculty and staff, and most importantly, our students, it's just, you know, it's just phenomenal. So if those funds were to be even reduced, it would be, it would be difficult. Also, I'll draw your attention to the district staffing and allocation policy, there's no changes, you know, over a number of years, and I appreciate this, and I know our principals do. We've worked to get all of our custodians, and Ms. Carnes, with, on two hundred and forty days. Our, um, instructional assistants are consistent with a hundred and eighty days, and they use those extra days outside with kids, um, for training and, and professional development, just like, like teachers do, to, to the means. So there's no changes on the, uh, staffing and allocation policy, that's what's been, uh, previously as well, on the, what we call refer to as the district, and then each school has that, has their own individual, uh, policy there. So I recommend the approval of the tentative school staffing and budget allocations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. I always say that after Christmas, or really started in December, we kind of live in two school years. You know, we're in this school year, but here it is, February, we're talking about next school year, that's right. So, pardon me?
Here it is March.
Here it is March, yes. Mary, all in little thing, that's the way that did it, March just threw me off, but anyway, um, by April, uh, May, May first is when we do the final ones to, to the councils, isn't it, Ms. Carnes? Yeah, by the May first board meeting. So right now, the principals will take this information, talk to their site-based councils, and then we'll have them the final allocation. I will note also, Ms. Carnes told the principals today, um, for their seek out, their allocation per pupil is the one hundred dollar minimum, and that's just kind of a placeholder in case something funky were to happen, and we always raise that dollar up at those final allocation, uh, to the schools, so. Yeah, and we look good, I mean, we, um, Ms. Carnes and I had a great meeting today about insurance, and we're excited to bring some things, and then, you know, as I said, we fully intend to bring to you all a proposal for a raise for our faculty and staff, and so we've got a good solid budget, and, um, as Ms. Carnes mentioned earlier, at the last board meeting, if we were to have taken that seat cut, it wasn't something that we were going to take, sit around and wring our hands about, you know? But fortunately, and we appreciate Governor Beshear, um, and, and the legislature, but that is being covered by the state, uh, that seat shortfall, so that's, that's really good. No, no definitive decision on the, um, those other two pots, and it's about forty thousand for us, but we were going to lose eighty-six thousand, I think, on the seat shortfall, but not now, so that's good news. I'll push on that.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to that.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth.
Mr. Murray, please.
Vote.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
So the following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state and overnight trips, for DECA, the State Conference, March second through the fourth of this year, at the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference in Louisville, um, KUNA, March second through the fourth, Crown Plaza in Louisville, Kentucky, Russell County Middle School Band for the KMA, Russell County Middle School, or the Middle School All-State Band at the Glenn Lamar Center for the Arts in Madisonville, Kentucky, March seventh through the eighth, and the NJOTC for a drone championship, um, in Knoxville, Tennessee, on March eighth of twenty twenty-five. I recommend approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight trips as presented.
Is there a motion?
Motion, please.
Mr. Selby, second, third, fourth, vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item is school-wide fundraiser.
'Tis the season, if anyone has a sweet tooth, um, for the world's finest chocolate cell, so this is one for Jameson Elementary School, and then one for Salem Elementary School. I think Russell, Jamestown is using theirs for technology devices, and Salem is for playground, uh, equipment.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, George. Vote.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
It's a pretty tough job.
Next item on the agenda is grounds worker job description and position.
Okay, so with the, with the addition of the First National Bank Athletic Complex, the district needs a grounds worker to provide upkeep and maintenance to the facility, and really to work on all of our campuses, I, I shared this and talked to our principals about this today. Attached is a grounds, a grounds worker job description, this position would also have responsibilities at the Acre Center of Excellence, as far as custodial responsibilities, with the approved classified salary schedule be amended as follows, if you all approve that, so zero to three years experience, sixteen through twenty-nine, and then it goes up with twenty-five plus, all the way to, to nineteen dollars, twenty-two cents, with twenty-five years in experience. So let, let's talk about that for, for just a minute. Um, we have this wonderful facility, I mean, I think we're all just.
Blown away.
Blown away, we're just super proud of it. Um, but we have added in our district and, and added, and not, without having somebody to keep up with it. Um, I'd sent out to our superintendent, let's serve, and asked him for other districts' job descriptions, and Superintendent Fields with Bowling Green Independent, he said, this is funny. He said, I'm thinking the same thing, he said, if you get some good job descriptions, would you send them to me? And I sent them to me, and I said, you know, we've got our new facility, and I said, I just want it taken care of, he said, oh, maybe, I'm in the same boat, you know, I've got to have somebody to, to take care of it and just have some pride in it. And beyond that, um, you know, picking up trash on all of our campuses, if it's graduation, getting ready for graduation, that we don't have pot bottles in the parking lot, and just really take care of, and, and do things for our, for our campuses, and keep things up, it's more of the outside work, right, um, than it is, and it, it's going to be a lot, with the primary focus of the athletic facility, and then, um, custodial work at the, at the A Center. Also, when I noted, um, on the job description, it would require some flexible scheduling, and, and this would be something that I would have with the potential applicants during interview process. For example, if we have a home football game, and we know the next day is going to be full of youth league football, somebody's got to clean that up, right? And, and so those, those things have got to taken care of, in addition to, like I said, um, taking care of the Aces. So, um, I would really appreciate, I know, um, our schools and our maintenance department would really appreciate this position, and just really get the right person that would help work and take care of, of, of our, of our facilities. So I recommend approval of the grounds worker job description and position as presented, and I'm happy to ask, answer any questions or anything like that.
And the salary thing too.
Yes, yes, with the salary.
I'll make a motion there.
Second?
Second.
Vote.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
All right, thank you all, we'll get that posted in the morning. Yes, it is, yes, yeah. Even when we had those pretty days, a week or so ago, and it got like sixty-five degrees, I thought if I had that position, they could be picking up trash that's, you know, accumulated, and just keeping things.
I even notice when I walk into the morgue, except if there's paper.
Yes, yeah, same, yeah.
Cause I can't stand it.
Yeah, so this is, we're excited about this.
Next item on the agenda is Kentucky Educational Development Corporation membership.
So we currently, currently belong to GREG, you all hear me talk about GREG, Green River Regional Educational Cooperative, um, but, um, some opportunities, and Ms. Jamie, um, has really seen some that would really help with federal programs as well. But as you look at it, it would help a lot of ours, and it's not uncommon for districts to belong to more than one co-op, because then you get to take advantage of what each co-op offers, and so I've listed a lot of those things there that came off of the, uh, off of the membership application that they've given us, grant participation, professional development, um, we get the marketing blitzes, we get information, grant opportunities, I won't go through all of that. Minority recruiting, you all have this list. Again, a lot of districts belong to more than one district, they will prorate this, uh, for this school year, uh, down to one thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and twelve cents, and then for, probably be around fifty-six hundred or so, uh, for membership next year. But if we sent X amount of teachers to a PD they were having, and we weren't a member, we would be paying into that anyway, so the, the opportunities that it presents us for that cost, in my opinion, far outweighs that cost. And, um, Ms. Jamie's shaking her head, she's already started, um, collaborating with some folks, um, that, some services that she would like to take advantage of. Um, so I would ask for approval to, um, for us to join the cooperative membership with the Kentucky Educational Development Corporation. And then, this would be through this school year, we would need to join it again for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Are we doing both at the same time, do we avoid?
No, you can only do this, right, yeah, yeah, so this would just be this, for this school year.
I'll make a.
Is there a second? Mr. Murray? Vote.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is update anchor of Pope Food Pantry.
Just ask them to provide us with, and, for Family Resource Centers to get, so you all can know how many students and families that we're serving, and, and again, I think every time we talk about it, it, it lets more people that may not know that we have it, and I even made note today at the principals meeting that, you know, if somebody shares, you know, when just in general conversation says, hey, my, my wife was laid off, or my husband's laid off, or we have this, we could just work it in the conversation, hey, we've got this food pantry, if you ever need it, let us know. Mrs. Dameron and I've talked a lot about what I'm going to say next, a lot of time right now, our families that maybe not, they don't get other benefits, but they're really feeling the crunch of high electric bills and high grocery bills, and they're just hit on hard times, and, um, we're seeing families that are not, you know, repeats, but they just, they may be a month, they just need some help, and so we're, we're just so thankful to be able to offer that. So just some numbers I'm going to share with everybody, um, January twenty twenty-five, number of households served was twenty-three, and then count the number of individuals in the household was a hundred and three, and that included sixty-five students. And I'll, I'll note again, um, income, it's open to anybody that has students in Russell County schools, we don't ask for income eligibility. No, we don't ask for anything like that, if you've got, if you come and tell one of our Family Resource Centers, or directors, or any of us that says, hey, we, we need some help with food, and you've got kids here, you're good to go. So in December of twenty twenty-four, um, number of households served was one hundred, four hundred twenty-eight individuals, uh, included two hundred and seventeen students. November of twenty twenty-four, number of households served was fourteen, fifty-eight individuals, included thirty-four students. Um, this month also, several churches provided extra food, they wanted to note to families during Thanksgiving, so a lot of great community partners, and then during the month of October, we had, uh, twelve stu-, uh, twelve households served, which was in turn sixty-six individuals, that included thirty-seven students that were served. Um, also, some folks from, one lady from the Kentucky Department of Education, with a lady from, from Lexington, came down, and Ms. Sherry Coffey and Ms. Dameron and I met with them, because they just had heard how our pantry was being run, and they wanted to see it, and so we appreciate that. No, all the Family Resource Center take care of it, all the Family Resource Centers meet families and, and, and provide food from there. It had to be, it, under the pilot program, it had to be housed on the middle school or high school campus, because it's feeding, it's through Feeding America Kentucky. So they, they provide a lot of the food, and then we supplement it with money from the Kevin's Kids.
And where is, where is it located?
It's located in the building right behind Ace, that used to be Mr. Sloan's classroom, that very end building. Mr. Knopes, that's right, I'm sorry, Mr. Kazook, it was Mr. Knopes's classroom.
Used to be the machine tool, correct?
Machine tool, and Ms. Sherry also has, um, the prom dresses in there, uh, as well, and then, so it's an easy access and, and thanks.
If you were, if you had students in the, who would be direct, how would you give them a touch with the food pantry?
Any of the, so for you, Ms. Mastin, would be Sherry Coffey. Yep, yep, so all the Family Resource Centers, Ms. Dameron, myself, any of us can get access, but, but they're probably better on the paperwork than maybe I would be, so, uh, we would, we would funnel that through the Family Resource Center. If, if a family called me and said, hey, I heard about that pantry, I would, I would get them in touch, and so, you know, you may have a child at the high school and at Jamestown, right? You know, because of families, and so they would, they would account for all of that with that. But, in, in your case, if it's a kiddo that wants some food to take home, that's why it's on the middle school and high school campus, students can take home food as well.
Is it, I, I have a student in particular, my dad, they are struggling with paying electric bills.
Yeah, yeah, so if that's a kid you're worried about, put them on Sherry Coffey's radar, because we, through Kevin's Kid, Kevin's Kids Funds, we, we help families with, um, paying electric bills. You know, the, that fund doesn't pay it every month, because, you know, if somebody's paying something for you every month, it's not, it's not getting you there, but, um, those hard times and things like that, so get in touch with Sherry Coffey, yeah. So again, Sherry Coffey at middle school, Danielle Helm at the high school, Amy Roy at Salem, um, Gordon Lester at Russell Springs, and Billy Foley at, um, Jamestown Elementary School. Just for the public to know, and any of those folks are, always get ahold of myself or Mrs. Dameron, we can point you in the right direction, so any of those folks, uh, for any time of need. Mr. Grider and Sherry Coffey, and he was putting it in four-wheel drive, and they were delivering food during NTI. So again, I said this today during the principals meeting, I think that's a lot of things our community don't realize, you know, cars drive by our schools, and wonder, how many of you ever think that our school resource officer and family resource, one of our family resource is out on NTI day delivering food to people? You know, the, the schools are a hub, a lot more than what people really realize, yeah. And thank you, Mr. Grider.
You're welcome, yeah, it was an honor too, just, uh, that particular setting was, uh, needed a four-wheel drive, it was still ice on the driveway, and actually the road didn't do it. Uh, the mailman, the mailman, the mailman, I believe, the mailman was, uh, we had to share a road, and, uh, why, he went down the bed, he, uh, it was, it was one of those, I told him, the principal, admin meeting this morning, it's very rewarding, because this, this is not a repeat customer or client, uh, this was one, I think it's telegraphed hardship, and, and then, and the, the, the means that they get, uh, was quite a bit, and they could put chilies together, they could put, there was a lot of chicken, uh, chicken breasts, hamburger, uh, hot dogs, there was a lot that kids would like too, but there was enough to put meals together that would get them leftovers for the next day, or, uh, uh, actually, almost of the week, uh, when I left, there were big tears coming down my eye, a younger couple, a younger lady, I think, just. eye. A younger couple, a younger lady, I think, just parched, a lot of obstacles and hardships, and you could tell that how appreciative she was. She, she, she stayed with us at that time. She was saying, "I'll, I'll pack them in the snow." We didn't ever do that, but she was very appreciative. So, when I left there, it's one of those good feelings when we do something, somebody, we say, "You sleep good." And it was just one of those times when we left. I told Ms. Coffey, I said, "That was a good touchdown, parent." And it was, of course, the kids, I could see them, hear them in the background. Of course, all families has, has dogs. And when I got out, I noticed that there was a gower of snow, and I said, and I told Ms. Coffey, I said, "We better make sure that the dogs are not loose." And Ms. Dameron and I, we go through this lot. Two big, two big dogs, she held them in, and, but very, this lady was very appreciative. So, nothing else comes out of beauty. That NTI day, it was a good day that day.
Yeah, I've been on home business before, and they had to tell the dog to, you know, move from the door to let me out of the house. But, you know, sometimes NTI gets a bad rap, but let me tell you something else it does. Provide, and, and besides providing continuity of instruction, our teachers, things have happened because of the connections that our teachers make with families and students, when otherwise, if they weren't on live or they weren't checking in and doing things, and it was just, quote, "A snow day," that may have not ever happened. And things have, you know, that, that, that connection, that communication stays, stays open. But it's, Ms. Dameron, do you have anything to talk about the pantry?
No, you did say that there's, you did, you did point out that there's a refrigerator and freezer.
I did not, but that is correct.
We have cold items and frozen items. So, more than just canned things.
Yes, yes. It's more than just canned and shelf-stable stuff. And one day, I was at Kroger, and they, they had this big clearance things, and it was in the freezer, and I took a picture of it and sent it to some of the Family Resource Center, because I know they want to catch good deals, and then they make good use of that money. And because Kevin Williams, and Kevin knows it, he fully supports this and loves it, the fact that his, his funds, you know, help supplement that. So, you all help supplement Kevin Williams' funds at April the 12th, I think, is the concert. So, please come out and, and support that. But it's, it's a blessing to be able to offer.
You would have thought we stopped at the grocery store, because it was, it was, it was a good amount of failure. It wasn't just a few cans of items of this. It was things that each one of us would purchase when we go to the grocery, as far as chicken patties, hamburger, sausage, egg patties, and then the hot dogs. And it was stuff that kids would like, too, but there's still stuff there that you could have made a meal out of, and would have lasted.
Yeah. And sometimes, we have enough stock in the pantry. Sometimes, when family needs food, they, they go make a, a store run, too, you know. But the freezer, we bought an additional freezer, but the big freezer and the big refrigerator are, are part of Heartland of Kentucky Feeding America. That's part of their stuff.
Next item on the agenda is personnel reporters.
Hey, Mr. Larry Greider hired substitute bus driver. Crystal Russell hired substitute bus driver. Chase Burton hired substitute teacher. Savannah Robbins hired substitute teacher. Dakota Davis hired classified substitute position, and Aaron Bernard hired classified substitute position. I'll also share that I previously reported that Dennis Kaiser had been hired on Airend as the new GROTC instructor, and I got word this past weekend, I've talked to him again today, that the Navy has also approved their part, and so I should be getting that letter just real soon. And, and then Ms. Rita will help him, and they'll do their teaching certification part with EPSB, and then he'll be able to start. So, we're really pleased with that as well.
Okay, next item, public comments.
As I mentioned before, it's really hard to hear the board talk. And as Mr. Selby once recommended to me, as I sit in the front row, it doesn't help.
I mean, it's my poor chair, I mean.
No, I'm not going to sit in the center.
Is that fan on right now?
Yes, sir.
It is hard.
I sat in your seat today during the principals' committee meeting, and, yeah.
That's a bad place.
Ms. Rita and I, yes, it hurts bad. Well, it's a heater that, this time of year, it comes on.
Anything else?
I'm about, this time, I'll just sit up.
Just sit up with us.
I'll make a motion in Gerald.
Thank you very much, and I was, I appreciate your comments about what may be a problem. Hopefully not.
Hopefully not.
I'm not as, Mr., as optimistic as Mr. Ford is, but I hope he's right.
That's all we can do right now. Got a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Ms. Joy, I mean, Ms. Brenda made the motion. Ms. Joy, second.
You know I'm making a motion.
Thank you all.